My apologies, we haven't, we're having some technical difficulties getting one of our councilmen into our Zoom. So we have given him just a few extra minutes to try to get into the meeting. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Like to call this meeting to orders committee of the whole July the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Here.
Tim. We know he's going to try. Larry.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Penny.
Here.
Thank you, Council. Next, our pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll look for an approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve.
First or second?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Who is that down there?
Amber.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
No.
Yes. Jean?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Is Tim on yet? Tim?
Tim, can you hear us?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Next, we'll look for an approval of our June twenty-third committee to hold minutes. I have a motion.
Motion approved.
By the second. Roll call.
Penny?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next, we'll dive into our monthly financials.
Okay. This will be for June twenty twenty-two. City general was two hundred, income was two hundred eighty-three thousand, two fifty oh two. Expenses were three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine eighty fifty-four with an operating income of a negative forty-eight thousand, seven thirty fifty-two. Water and sewer income was three hundred seventy-four thousand, nine fifty-two oh one. Expenses were two hundred seventy-four thousand, six forty-three fifty with an operating income of a positive one hundred thousand, three oh eight one. Street income was fifty-two thousand, four fifty-three ninety-three with an operating income of a negative eighty-six thousand, six sixty-nine forty-nine. And some of that, some of those big ticket items were for some hazardous mitigation expenses that was to reduce some of the flooding that we've had. The fixed assets was the fire truck. Down payment for that. Capital construction management was for the Barrington lift station repairs. And then we had Fletcher Road expense, it's asphalt, and for the Arkansas Department of Transportation, that was South Penalt- South Penalto overlay. And that's all I got.
Rhonda?
Yes.
This is Tim online. How many of those mitigation costs are we getting grants to reimburse?
I do not know the answer to that question. We'll have to get with Tim or Pat up.
Tim, I can tell you, we did receive a check late last week, early this week reimbursement on that two hundred and seventeen thousand out of the two hundred and ninety, two hundred ninety thousand that we spent.
Okay. That was how much again?
The project was two hundred ninety thousand. We received reimbursement for two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Okay. So that, that helps. Thank you so much, Mr. Clark. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, comment from citizens. I'm going to try to streamline this a little bit this evening, a little bit different what we have. Our comment from citizens, if you have anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak. If you have anything that's related to our business that is on the agenda, I'm going to let you speak at the time of that particular item. So if we have something on the agenda that you would like to speak concerning, we will break that and let it you speak at the time that that item is being discussed. That's very similar to how we've been doing in our planning and it's worked very well. So we will change that format just a little bit this evening with our comments from citizens. So anyone now that would like to speak that's not on the, the business for tonight.
Hello, James Dean, ten twenty-five Trailwood, and I want to talk about spending some extra money from the city, which what better meeting to do that at? I had some new neighbors that moved in from out of state and they found out that I was on the planning commission and in planning commission to them equals complaint department. So I'm here on their behalf to complain about our water department and when Madeline is, is out, there seems to be no backup for the water department. And I talked to the mayor about it and she said that maybe we could look at getting maybe a temporary person hired or a backfill person. I know, you know, we were a small town, we're now a small city, and if we fill all these houses that we're going to be building, we're going to be an even bigger city. And I really think that we need to look at either a lot of cross-training or we need to look at some additional personnel, some office workers to help with our other departments. Their complaints are chiefly is one couple's from California, one couples from Texas, so they're not from here. They are trying to reach the water department, get no answer, leave a message, get no call back. So that to them is frustrating because they do not work here where they can take off for lunch and come during our hours of operation. So they have to rely on phone. I myself, on several occasions, have run into the same issue. Last Friday, I had a question about, you know, making sure my water bill got transferred because I moved into a new house because I know right around the middle of the month, water bills come out and I hadn't received one yet and I just want to make sure that everything was good to go. I left two messages. It, no return, of course. I being on the planning commission know that I can call somebody else. So I called Leslie and was informed that Madeline was out and that they hadn't forwarded her phone. So we, we need to look at that as a city, you know, keep people, you know, at least abreast. I did get my question answered. It had to come from James. You know, but he wasn't in the office whenever he got the call, so I had to wait for him to get back in the office to give my answer. And, you know, that's a small thing, but other people have big things. So that's why I'm here is just on behalf of our citizens. Maybe we could look at hiring some additional personnel to help staff our departments and lean less on just not returning calls or transferring phones to other backups. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the building? Seeing none, do we have any online, James? Excuse me, we do have one more in the building.
Good afternoon. Name's Kenneth Lovett, eighteen seven oh two Clearwater Road. I'd sent y'all and the planning committee an email last week and brought up some things about Mr. Clinton. And I'm asking that we've removed that gentleman from his seat and I don't know how to do that, but it needs to happen. And y'all are aware of the fact of the reason why, and if we need to talk about it, we can. If anybody else has got some questions, let it real. So landfill, I talked to the ADQ again and they keep bringing up the fact says people are moving in on the landfill. And the reason why they are is because Tawny Town's allowing them to. So, you know, the originally the landfill moved in on the people and over time it gets too big for the area and it needs to go somewhere else, but the powers that be are not allowing it to go somewhere else. So we're having to deal with that. So I don't know where to go with that other than ask y'all to consider how you're zoning things. And, you know, what do you do? You want to grow. But it ain't growing in the right direction with issues out there at the landfill steady coming up. The other thing is, you know, I know landfill should take care of their own business, but if they can't operate their business, then we need a code officer to help them do that. I don't know where that needs to come from, but we need some way to, you know, we all was talking about how we're going to control them after we built this nine-page wondrous document that hasn't gone anywhere, you know? They're still doing what they're doing. And we're still smelling what we smell, you know? Right now, we don't have the gases that we did back in the winter, but it's coming again. So, you know, we're going to go right back in the same boat. And Mr. Aikman stated last time, he said that you know, Tawny Town was a member of Boston Mountain, you know, so they should be pretty much on the same. I don't think he said that exactly, but they should be on the same playing field, but just because you're a member of something don't mean you agree with all the, all the aspects of everything. So, you know, think about that whenever you get into, you know, you've got the services of Mr. Aikman. But if you didn't have his services, you may have somebody else with a total different opinion and it may turn around one hundred eighty degrees from what we've been doing so far. So I don't know where he's been directed or by who, but just because you're a member of something don't mean that you agree with everything that they stand for. Thank you.
Anyone else in the building with comments online, James? Do we have anybody online? I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, what was yours regarding?
That I've got a comment, but I don't know if it fits here or there.
We'll go ahead and take it now.
Okay. I again want to remind Tawny Town of our flooding issues. Where are we going with it? Where's our planning? Who's going to enforce our rules? We've never had, I'm still questioning how us neighbors got in the position of having to defend our neighborhood. But mainly I, I just want to be a squeaky wheel. We've got to do something before we go developing a bunch of more stuff. I don't know how or what, but these retention ponds don't seem to be the answer. And I don't have an answer. But as we build this town and grow, which is great, I'm not against the growth of Tawny Town. We just need to take into consideration what is already here, what is in place, defend that. And as we grow, like I said, I don't know what the answer is, but the retention pond is not doing it. Because once that retention pond is full, it still comes downhill. And I'm not the only one with flooding issues. It's new houses, old houses. We've got to stop and think before we grow, where are we going to put the water? The water, the rain runoff, we, we've got to address it somehow, shape or form before we go spreading out even thinner than we are. We can't take the care of the problems. It doesn't seem like that we have now. And I just wanted to touch on the speeding on South Penalto. I got passed on South Penalto the other day. And I'm not sure who or what to ask questions. If just like the landfill issue, do we have a code enforcement? Do we have a code enforcer now or not?
Currently, we do not have a code enforcement officer. I do have it, the position posted and hopefully we will be getting one soon.
Okay. So who is our lookout for like the landfill problems? The gentleman that we did not allow to rezone on South Penalto continued as of last week. Now, I can't say this week, but he's in violation. And I don't understand who, who is watching, who makes these people accountable.
It would be our police department, the Tawny Town Police Department. Yes, ma'am.
All right. And I want to thank you all for your service. I know you work hard and I really appreciate it. I don't have an idea, but I have a concern. And I hope y'all stop looking, listen before we start proceeding with all this new growth bound to come. I understand that. I think we just need to slow down, back up, figure out some of our problems.
Thirty more seconds.
Thank you.
And Ms. Brown, just, just so you know, I, I was here this morning and we did speak specifically about your property once again. But I ask you, please be that squeaky wheel. We appreciate you and being patient with us and we are trying to come up with ideas that are, that are within our budgets and will work to help protect you and your property. Be that squeaky wheel for us. Any other comments in house? Online? Thank you. Next, we'll go to our courts and we will start with our police department.
For the month of June, we responded to eight hundred and five calls for service, filed eighteen accident reports, served eighty-five warrants, leaving this outstanding one thousand and thirty-three warrant amount is over one point three million. Training hours are up to five hundred and eighty, total citations are two hundred and seventy-six, eleven for speeding, hundred and forty-three for other traffic violations, forty-six for criminal and seventy-six for improper driving. Our city ordinance, three hundred and forty-three warnings total, one hundred and seventy-nine for speeding and one hundred and sixty-four for other traffic violations. Any questions on that? At the end of this month, I believe it's the twenty-ninth, we have two officers graduating the police academy down in Camden. So we'll be going down there and celebrating that day with them and it'll be Officer Black and Officer Calico. So when they return, they'll be fully certified and ready to work, I'm sure.
Any thoughts or ideas chief on our warrant amount, how we can pull that down a bit more manageable?
It's things are starting to get better with the jail. There's still a couple of issues every now and then. Right now, the, you know, COVID had started to set back with everything, but currently the last number I heard, they were down forty deputies in the jail. So being short-staffed, you know, getting people in and out is, is arresting somebody on one or putting them in jail and holding them there to where they can either get their fines or pay bond to get out it. They are getting released about as quick as they get dropped off. So it is starting to get a little bit better, but right now it's just, it's hard to have any consequence to, to that.
What about the work release program? Have they enacted that again yet?
Washington County.
Where, yeah, we can get inmates to work off fines. Could we possibly do that with some of the people that are in this one point three million?
We offer it every day at court at Elm Springs. It's, it's on a monitor in the corner that flashes that they can seek either department for their fines to, to do that. As of recently, I've had one person reach out. We don't have a whole lot of takers in that. As far as Washington County's work release, I've talked to Scott a couple of times about trying to get some up here to help them. I'm just waiting for a phone call when that fires up again. I'm told it would, it should be soon that Washington County starts theirs up again. So.
What, do you know what the amount is that they offer for those inmate, those people?
Depending on, it's really if I've, I've done twenty-five dollars an hour. If, if somebody comes in and works hard and, and puts forth effort, we'll get it as high up there as we can to, to try to help pay off those fines. I know we've had several come in that did as little as they could and it showed, but typically it's kind of in that range.
And that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. Trying to pull a rabbit out of the hat. Thank you, Chief. Next is our fire department and our interim operations chief, Mark Ramsey.
Good evening. For the month of June, the fire department ran thirty-nine calls within the city, twelve within the rural area. The breakdown is twenty-seven EMS calls within the city, four fire calls, two MBAs, one false alarm and five service calls. In the rural area, we ran four EMS calls, five fire calls. Now, part of those numbers will be mutual aid calls to the city of Johnson and Cave Springs as well. Two MBAs in the rural area and one false alarm call. Firefighters completed approximately two hundred ninety-six hours of training for the month. The fire department hired Cody Tucker as a part-time fireman. Cody is working Mondays and Fridays. We currently have two full-time employees that work, one works Monday through Thursday. The other works Tuesday through Friday and Cody is able to partner with both of those individuals and work with them on Monday and Friday, ensuring that we always have two guys on staff throughout the week. The city purchased a new Humper tanker, twenty twenty-two Freightliner from Midwest Fire. If you haven't seen it, it's right out here in the parking lot. If you've got any questions on it, please don't hesitate to ask. She is, she is beautiful and she is great to drive and it's great for this city. So thank you for that purchase. We honored the retirement of the operations chief, Todd Witzigman, in the month of June. I just want to say, Amber, thank you so much for all your hard work into that party, everybody. Mayor, everybody that was involved. I mean, it was, it was a good send-off for him. I know he told me later, he said, I had to go out a few times because it, it almost got to me. Said, I don't, I don't cry often, but that one, that one almost got me. So good job. Good job. Volunteer fireman Brandon Carmine completed his wildland and first responder class. To tack those two on in a month is impressive. If this included the first couple of days in July, I could say that he completed his intro on PPE as well. But that is one volunteer that we wanted to give a shout out to and just say, he's, he's doing really good completing all these classes pretty quickly. Coming up, we've got three firemen that we're working on sending through EMT school for the fall and that is covered through the grant. Any questions for me?
Can I drive the truck?
Do you want to volunteer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Next is our public works department, Mr. Clark.
Get everything turned over here. An update on the first item, it says beginning Monday, July eighteenth. That's actually been bumped a week. So starting next Monday, our tree trimming contractor will complete trimming on Reed Valley Road. And after finishing at that site, they will move to South Barrington Road. I ask again, please be considerate of workers in the road, not just the tree trimming contractor, but our own water, sewer and street crews as well. I can't emphasize that enough. I don't know how many times we've had close calls with people that just want to fly through a work zone and it's very dangerous for us. So please give them a break. Last week, our planning staff, the mayor and I had an opportunity to meet with the highway commissioner, Philip Taldo. During a converse, phone conversation, I inquired about the status of highway projects that will affect Tawny Town. He offered to come visit us in person and that was the end of that sentence. Mr. Taldo assured us that his main focus is on three projects. Those projects are Highway one twelve widening, the six twelve Springdale bypass and airport access road. First of all, the one twelve widening project will begin with the section from Don Tyson Parkway to Highway four twelve with major improvements to the four twelve, one twelve intersection. The projected cost of this section is twenty to thirty million dollars. Estimated let date for the construction of this section is scheduled for late twenty twenty-four or early twenty twenty-five. However, relocation of utilities will have to begin in twenty twenty-three. This is important to us because we have water lines that will have to be moved outside of the new right-of-way. We can expect RDOT to pay for moving lines that exist inside the current right-of-way, but any upgrades to lines that are outside the right-of-way that will have to be moved, will have to be funded completely by the city. I've instructed our engineers to begin immediately working on plans to determine the needs and estimated cost to relocate these utilities. Two other major projects for RDOT is the Springdale Northern Bypass and Airport Access Road. Two other major projects for RDOT is the Springdale Northern Bypass and Airport Access Road. These will have a similar timeline for the eastern portion from one twelve to the airport access. Right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation are estimated to be complete late in twenty twenty-three. Construction should begin mid to late twenty twenty-four. The total cost for the complete six point five mile bypass from one twelve to four twelve is estimated to be a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty million dollars. Right-of-way ax- acquisition for the airport access road is estimated to be completed late twenty twenty-three and utility relocation late in twenty twenty-four. The cost of this four-mile section is estimated at a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Finally, Mr. Tallo assured us that the department is working on the design for the Clint's four twelve traffic signal. I will follow up on that project soon. In the water and sewer department, the public works department experienced an act of vandalism last Tuesday, July twelfth, twelfth, in the late hours of the night. Two persons were recorded on our security cameras throwing rocks over the fence at vehicles. The windshield was broken in our John Deere tractor, rear windows and two trucks and a windshield in one. A couple of vehicles also sustained damage from rocks hitting the body, causing dents in tailgates and other areas. Tony Town PD is investigating. Now for the building activity report. The numbers for June. Are pretty much down across the board. For the first time this year, we've had, we'd had single digits on residential building permits. We're down to seven last month. We have noticed a little bit of a slowdown in, in building, whether it's interest rates or, or what, I'm not. Entirely sure, I'm sure that has more to do with it than anything, although we have a few new subdivisions going through planning right now. The other thing that was supposed to be on here, and I mentioned it to you at the last COW meeting, is the purchase of a new piece of equipment. For the, for those of you that don't know what a skid steer is, there's a picture of it. We've got it in the budget, the price was about sixty-five thousand dollars. And that is for a new unit that is source well pricing that saved us about thirty thousand dollars. And I will bring that to you at the council meeting for approval. The main reason we want to acquire this piece of equipment is it has a lot of options as far as attachments. We would be looking at some point adding a, this skid cutter or basically a brush hog. And I think the dozer blade itself would be a great, a great asset for cleaning ditches and grading ditches. The machine is small enough, you can get down in the ditch with it as opposed to a road grader or some backhoe larger, larger piece of equipment. And that's all I got. If you got any questions.
Question for you, James. Back on your notes about the widening of one twelve. I saw a piece there that I think we may have omitted, it was about changing the line size, a water line size. And so is that something we are able to do at the time that they're widening one twelve to help save us the costs?
Well, we're able to do that, but we would have to pay the difference in cost from the existing line size to whatever size we install.
So the pipe itself is what we'd be paying for, but as far as excavating or putting the new one in, that cost would be.
The way I understand it, yes, the excavation would be on, on them and we would just pay for the difference in, in the cost of the pipe.
So would that be from four twelve? How far down?
Four twelve to, well, they're going to Don Tyson, of course, our water. Service area only goes to Kissinger.
And what size line would we be looking at to upgrade that to?
Well, we'll want to get everything up to at least eight inch. Right now, we've got some three inch, some four inch, some six inch in that, in that area.
Anyone else have questions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. James, this is Tim Burris on, on the phone. So if I understand you correctly. We are charged the difference in moving from our, say, three inch to the eight inch, is that correct? We're, we're charged the difference in the cost?
Yes, if, if the line exists in the current right-of-way and it needs to be moved outside of the new right-of-way, then we wanted to upsize, we would pay for the difference in cost of the pipe.
Okay, so if there's a three-inch line there now and we put in it, and, and they've done their cost to say, hey, we've got to move that three-inch line, but then we put in an eight-inch line, which obviously we pay for. But then when they come to move that eight-inch line, it costs them more to do so. And they say, oh, that extra cost we didn't account for because you changed the rules of the game there, you're going to have to pay us X dollars extra, is that? Am I getting that right?
I don't think they're going to charge us for the excavation because basically they're, they're going to be digging a ditch either way. And, and the ditch.
Right, that's, that's why I'm asking. So we, so we don't have to pay anything extra to have things moved. We're just paying to, to go from our old pipe to our new pipe, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Because my follow-up question would be then, is it best for us to hold off until that project is complete? But it sounds like I've got my answer, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Clark? Very much. Next, we'll go to our planning department.
Good evening, I'm Mark Latham, just started this Monday as a city planner. I'm excited to be here, hopefully we can do some things that they were talking about regarding stormwater and some other things that I think are important to the community. I did want to mention, I think that the next planning commission meeting will be on the twenty-sixth here at City Hall at six PM. At the last meeting, the, the board agreed to adopt a new calendar, which I believe everybody got a copy of, really allows staff some time to go through each project and make any kind of corrections to move forward on, so wanted you guys to be aware of that. On the public hearing, Baraloshi planned unit development. At preliminary subdivision flat. The applicant is requesting a PUD. And that approval for a hundred and thirty-nine lots. One hundred and thirty-six are sim- single family, two detention. And then one common area and that's on forty point one three acres. Located on Plank Road. Under the planning commission, Jean Mary, which is Manhattan Steel and Door. The applicants requesting a preliminary large-scale development, approval to construct a commercial building. And associated parking on approximately point six four acres. Project is located at the southeast corner of intersection via Tante Lane. And Jean Mary Drive on that parcel with number. And we're back to Baraloshi's plan unit development. Again, they're asking for PUD and plat approval for those hundred and thirty-nine lots. On Plank Road. Also, number three is the Victory Church. Large-scale delive, large-scale development preliminary. Approval for construction of thirteen thousand three hundred and three square feet building associated with parking and driveway. That's located at two fifty Industrial Circle East. And finally, the Tony Town Fire Station. Preliminary large-scale development to construct eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-six square feet of fire station associated with parking and driveway. And that's located at one nine nine is Bandi Avenue. If all this stuff goes okay, then the council will address on August first. Final approval on the. Excuse me, Baraloski Plan Unit Development. Looking forward to August with the planning commission will meet on the twenty-third. What we have currently submitted is Spinoza Avenue rezoning, which the applicant is requesting a rezoning piece of property that's five point eight three acres. Located and should be seven tents, Spinoza Avenue from A Agriculture to R three residential. Then we have the Lower Lane Warehouse. They're requesting a preliminary large-scale development approval to construct seventeen thousand square foot warehouse on six one nine Lower Lane on three point seven acres. And then finally. We have a parking lot. Parking lot. The applicants requesting a large-scale development for parking lot expansion and paving, and this is locating on an acre. At ten seventy-four East Henry Villanto Boulevard. Question.
You're busy for your first few days on the job. We don't want you to get too relaxed, we'll keep you going. We, we do want to welcome you though, we, we appreciate you working with us and congratulations on, on the new position and again, we appreciate you very much. Next, we'll go to our Tony Town museum board.
We're excited to announce that we have a new potential member, Ethan Oxford is interested in joining the board. Ethan has a bachelor's in history from Arkansas Tech University and currently works at Scott Family Amasium. Becomes highly recommended by our former president Catherine Karas, work, they work closely together. We asked Mayor Angie Russell to appoint Ethan, please, and that the city of council approve Ethan's appointment at the August first city council meeting. And we had fifty-two visitors in June, forty-five of those on our Tony Town Heritage Day and seven during the normal business hours. We also will be relocating the Piazza Family Blessings box, you know, it's just right outside the museum currently by the parking lot of the police department. And Mayor Angie has approved the new location of the food pantry to go. Actually, the new location is over to the west of the water department and by the parking lots over this, over here. Penny and Misty Piazza will be working together to get that slab poured within the next month. And then just a reminder that we have that things are starting to happen that for the great festival, the hundred and twenty-third Tony Town Great Festival will have extended hours at the museum, so Thursday will be open from seven, from three in the afternoon till seven. Friday from one to seven and then Saturday, ten in the morning till seven PM, so we hope we have lots of visitors and everyone enjoys the festivals always. We've been making spaghetti, went over, there was lots of spaghetti made last week and one more day spaghetti. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Next, we'll go on to our old business discussion of ordinance establishing standards for a small wireless facility within the city of Tony Town, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. I'm going to give a, a brief synopsis of this and then I'll look to our comments. If anyone has comments and then I'll also ask our attorney to speak on this. A few months ago, we had this discussion come up and the, there were homeowners next to this property that was being you, going to be used for cellular towers. And the homeowners requested that this discussion be brought up again at some point and it is taking me, it has taken me a little bit of time to make this happen, but I, I did acknowledge to them that I would make that opportunity happen and so tonight is that night. I'm, I'm going to open this up first to any citizens that have comments on this matter and let you voice opinions, ideas. Anything that you've got concerning towers, et cetera, within our city. And at some point, my goal is if this, if the council wishes to address this and change any of our ordinances or anything within the city to make that available, if that's what council wishes to do. So I'm going to open the floor up at this point, so anybody that is here that would like to speak pro or con, or any ideas that you have on cellular communication towers or any type of towers in the city, I'm going to open it up.
Gene, first off, thanks for taking the time. You know, this is one of those projects that's that I find a, a little more unsavory. Not that we don't need cell towers, but in this particular case, because of those that have been affected. And this is obviously a very long document and, and I think it probably needs some time for us to look through it. What, what would you like to see us do tonight? Is it just a discussion time or is there something that you're hoping to accomplish this evening?
No, there, I do not have an agenda on this, Mr. Burris. The only thing I'm allowing is the time for someone to make comments on this, if they have thoughts, ideas or suggestions. Because that was the comment that I had with the property owner is to allow this forum to be open. So that is the, the purpose of tonight. I have no intention of changing anything tonight. It's just open for communication.
Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that. So I haven't had a chance to review all of it yet and, and I'm guessing that you, that you have. How does the, the tower that, that is going up there by Ozarko? How does that, how does that fit in this? Because one of the things I noticed was, you know, if it's more than fifty feet or if it, if it's ten percent taller than the current tallest tower as of this date in two thousand nineteen. So how does this current tower? That Verizon wants to put in, how, how does that fit this particular ordinance?
Actually, Mr. Burris, I'm going to turn those questions over in a few moments to our attorney, let him answer any. That you may have. Someone here in the building that's going to make a comment, so I'm going to turn the floor if you would, state your name, address, please.
Jason Steele, twenty-three ninety-six Wildcat Creek Boulevard. I got here this evening and I kind of speed read through the small cell proposed ordinance and looks like a good organ, ordinance, it was drafted pretty well. The the other wireless communication tower application, I haven't had a chance to read that yet. But I have heard that there has been some concern about the cell towers falling down. And really, that's what I came tonight to address. If somebody had some concerns about that. The height of the tower that Verizon is proposing is a hundred and seventy foot, is that right? Correct. Okay, and it's a monopole tower, is that correct? I believe so, okay. I have built and owned dozens of towers and when I heard that someone was concerned about the tower falling over on their residence. The only way that that would happen is if there's a catastrophic failure of the base plate, which is extremely rare. And if that actually happened, the people that live in that house that is next to the proposed tower. They really wouldn't be concerned about the tower falling on their house because if that tower has a catastrophic failure, that house is gone. You know. Before that tower ever came down. The house would go before the tower does. And I could provide pictures of when Katrina went through New Orleans where there's a ship that was on the land. Butted up against. Butted up against a monopole tower. The tower is still standing. So. So that's why I came this evening was to put any. Concerns of the tower collapsing on someone's home.
How many towers do you own or have you worked with?
About sixty eight.
Quite a few.
Yes. And that's towers from monopoles, self supporters, the big oil Derrick looking things and the guide towers. And I did have a guide tower come down one time when the tornadoes hit Joplin. A three hundred and forty five foot tower came down in Southwest City, Missouri. And. About seventy foot was still up in the air and then the tower just laid over like that. But the tip of the tower was not three hundred and forty five feet away.
None of yours look like pine trees, do they?
What's that?
None of yours look like pine trees, do they?
I did build one years ago in Fayetteville. It looks like a tree.
Okay.
So. Yes.
In other words. You're saying. If there's a house in a tower. That house, you're talking about a tornado, right?
Oh, yes.
The house is going to be gone before that tower is gone.
Long before the tower does.
Any other questions? Council?
I am, I'm so sorry. I recognize your face and I know we've met, but I did not catch your name. Could you please repeat your name?
Jason Steele.
That's right. That's right. Thank you so much. And I know you've got some expertise in in this field that I certainly don't. Now, I know that because this is a monopole. Are you saying that this is different than that tower that came down in in Johnson where the buildings around it were still there, but but that tower came down? Is that right?
Yes, that was a self supporting tower.
Okay, and I understand the argument. I understand the argument that if the if the pole comes down and, you know, the house is gone too. I I don't love the argument, but I I get it. But tornadoes are are. Sometimes discriminating and sometimes not. But. How, how? How tall is this, is this tower?
I think I've heard a hundred and seventy.
Okay, so a hundred and seventy foot monopole in in your professional experience, I know you've done this for for years. You feel that that at least hits the safety part. We, it obviously doesn't cover aesthetics and those sorts of things. But at least from a safety standpoint, your professional opinion, you feel like like it is safe. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the house has comments on the towers or ordinance? I'm sorry, would you like to stand to the tower to the podium and state your name, please? We can't, we can't hear you.
Rebecca Timmons, twenty twenty four South Penalto. I was just wondering, I mean, he's got a lot of experience and stuff. This is a Verizon tower that's going up? And did you build for Verizon?
I built and owned my own towers and Verizon did go on most of my town.
Okay.
And I have nothing to do with this town.
Nothing to do with it. Okay.
I would love to build it if.
Any other comments in house? Online? Mr. Eitman, you'd like to comment on this as well?
Evening, Council. I'd like to maybe give some explanation to what's in your packet. On the agenda, there's a slight mislabeling. Where it's talking about small wireless facilities. That ordinance is actually already passed. It was done in two thousand nineteen and I put a copy in your packet. So you were all were able to to have that for reference to be able to see, see what that was. You, since two thousand nineteen, there have been a number of small wireless facilities that have gone in in Tony Town without probably a lot of people recognizing. If you see the poles that are about utility pole height and. You know, a good eighteen or or twenty inches in in diameter. Have some equipment at the at the base. Those are small cell facilities. And the law changed in in around two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. That allowed for carriers to build those facilities in our right of way. Without having to seek our permission. And that kind of concerned a number of cities kind of across the country. And so. We prepared some regulations on how that is because when you start constructed in the right of way, there's lots of stuff. There's James's water lines. There's other, there's fiber, there's gas, there's other things. There's safety concerns. There's a whole wide range of 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 issues that are there. And so. That ordinance two thousand nineteen eight eight fifty six are those regulations that govern the, you know, how. How the construction of those facilities takes place. So we do have, and I think they're fairly. Robust, those those regulations with regard to small cell. If you flip over past those. There is a copy of section and I saw it up there earlier on the screen, one fifty two point one fifty two. That's one page here. Those are your current regulations dealing with. What we all call cell towers, but the. The the larger. Towers, the one that that Verizon is is building. I think this was stuck into the the code about ten years ago. Or so, and I think the. Kind of as as a result of the Verizon discussion last year, we had some talk while I was up here on the podium, that those were rather thin. And that we might be good to look at some more thorough. Set of of regulations to to replace that. So this one, this one page or maybe a half page are the current regulations that you have. For for cell towers. They have to get C U P. But beyond that, that's these are your current regulations. Also in this is a memo that I did last year in October on the T C A, the Federal Telecommunications Act. Which preamps a lot of a local authority on. The siding and placement of 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 cell towers. And so I put that in there as a reminder, kind of of the. Oh, the contours of the law that we're operating under the T C A. Really. Put some guardrails on what we were able to do. And really on what we're able to not allow. And so, and if you go through that that memo. Really started on the second page, it kind of going forward, it has a number of those limitations that we. That we have to, that we have to live within. And that's always a very important, important reminder. And an additional limitation that was put on, I want to say recent, but in actuality, it's probably five or six years ago. Is that once there is a tower, there are limitations on what we can not approve with regard to additions to that tower. So if there's an existing cell tower and somebody wants to make a modification to the tower to add another carrier, to add some. Some height to it, to change what would be the dimensions of it. There were some previous. Cell tower codes across country that would require the applicant to come back in, reapply all that sort of stuff in in federal law. Does not allow that unless the change is substantial. That's what the term is used in the in the code now. So. There's a lot to keep in mind when we're talking about regulating for. For cell towers, a lot that we can do still, we can we can have make decisions on siding. We can make. Some decisions on 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 how they look. We do control. We do have. Conditional use permits required for the location of these. But what we can't do is deny them unless we have substantial evidence in the record. Supporting the reason for the denial. Two, we can't deny. The the result of our decision to deny a cell tower cannot be a lead to a disruption of service, the denial of service. Or any discrimination between between carriers. So those are the the guardrails and I was talking with the mayor. Kind of about this issue. Last week and thought it might be helpful if I propose some regulations for. The council to to look at and kind of consume and 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 talk about. And these are the. Document that follows. Our current code. No, excuse me, it follows my memo and I hope everything is in the same order. But it is a ordinance that is. About fourteen pages in length. Actually, it's a code. This document here. And this is a a version that I worked on with Juliette Garver for Cave Springs. Okay, Springs did not have. A wireless communication facility code or one that was adequate. And so recently, I want to say it was within the last year. We we adopted. This code substantially. I I made some changes in here to take out some specific case spring stuff and to more have it more closely aligned to. To our, to our ordinances, but. In here, there are regulations with regard to noise, to lighting and signage. To to vegetation, to. The type of tower. This Steele was talking about. Preferring a monopole. Tower. You can't have. Certain height restrictions that we could consider. The setbacks for the tower, you know, how far back the base of the tower is from the next available or next nearest. Resident. Those are all things that that. That that are that are in here as well as requirements for the applications, middles of of engineering. Structural engineering of the tower. To basically put an engineer stamp on what Mr. Steele was was describing with, you know. Their ability to withstand, you know, severe conditions. If they do fail, how they fail. I've seen a lot of the. Kind of the the videos and some of the engineering on it where these things are, when they do fail, they're sort of designed more or less to kind of fold in on themselves. Well, that. You know, that that should be more than just somebody standing up here and saying it. There should be an engineered plan with the stamp on it that you can. That that you can rely upon. So that's what's in your, in your, in your packet here. And I think it's up to. You all on on deciding what you want to do with this. It could be that. You're look at it and you're happy with the regulations that you have. It could be that and you might benefit from getting some more perspective on this if. After you've had some time with it or ready, you could send it down to planning commission and have them review it and. Provide some recommendations back to you all. You know, or it's something that you could, you know, decide to. Bring forward and sort of amend as we go, you know, at one of your future meetings. So I just wanted to provide that opportunity to you and sort of explain what was in the packet because I know it's a little confusing and there's a lot of, a lot of pages there. Are there any questions for me?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So just for clarification, we can control the aesthetics and height of this pole?
If it does not lead to a denial of service or. Reasonably and reasonably discriminate against between carriers. So there are guardrails there. So yes, you have some control on on aesthetics. You can deny a location based on aesthetics. But you have to have substantial evidence in the record supporting that denial. One of the the aspects about the T C A is that a a person who is denied, an applicant who is denied. Can seek what's called expedite review. They can go to federal court and get a quick decision based on the record and. All the, all the, you know, that you take the record from everything that we did at the city, you give it to the federal court and federal court looks and says, where's my substantial evidence? I don't see it. So and I've seen cases where courts upheld denial based upon. Aesthetics, but they had stuff in the record that supported that denial. So if we want to build in more. Aesthetic basis, then you know, the time would be to do that in the code and then in the review process. You know, making sure that that is covered. And that might be something, you know, now that you asked it, Amber, you know, we might want to look at that kind of the review criteria that's in here and say. You know, are aesthetics adequately? Handled, you know, and that would be probably a good thing to look at.
Ms. Reitman, this is Tim Burris. Hey, thank you so much for all the work that you put into this and. And I appreciate the ideas that you set forth. One question I have. And and I'm sure that you're uniquely qualified to answer is since we can't show. Favoritism or or bias against one company or another. Now that we've put some towers in town or now that this Verizon tower goes up or whatever happens. If we do have an aesthetic construct going forward, that's part of our substantial record. Can that be viewed as though we are somehow biased against somebody else or or not treating them fairly?
They might make, you know, somebody might make that argument, but you know, my. I guess my response would be. We are allowed to legislate in this field. The T C A still allows us to make decisions with regard to deciding and. And 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 certain aesthetics, I think would become a factual question. At at some point, if for whatever reason, the aesthetic requirement was. Was made it so that a tower cannot be located anywhere in the city. Then that argument might. Get a toehold. But just the the type of. You know, aesthetic concerns that you can take into account with regard to these regulations are typically ones that have to do with the. The type of the tower, the height of the tower. Camouflaging stealth, you know, stuff that sometimes is is referred to, you know, the 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 color, the paint. How you hide the equipment by fencing, whether you have vegetation. You know, things of that nature. That, those are the type of things that you have in the in the review criteria. And I, you know, I think it'd be kind of hard pressed to say that that was. Those type of things were causing a a barrier. As far as the siding goes, you know, that requires a conditional use permit. And in that, one of the criteria of the conditional use permit is. Compatibility, right? And so, you know. And 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 an argument could be made on a particular tower application that. A tower on that site is not compatible with whatever the surrounding uses. Of that property are, you would want evidence in the record. In order to su- support that. But there's kind of, so there's kind of two different ways that aesthetics can come into play here. But as far as the review criteria for the the construction of the tower, I I I think. It'd be rather hard to to make that argument that the aesthetic requirements there would be a denial of service.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And again, thank you for the the fourteen pages. I I certainly haven't committed it to memory yet, but I look forward to doing so.
One more thing?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Eitman.
Yes.
Justin.
So, like I said, I just got here and started reading this new proposed ordinance. And I saw something on page two that I thought I'd, you know, just chat with you about. In this new ordinance, it says that the only type of towers allowed will be new towers in the monopole type structure. With internal antennas. Well, for years, I've always called those flagpole towers. And it looks like a giant pencil, you know, that's stuck in the ground. And there's no antennas that stick off the side of it. The problem with those, they can only accommodate normally two cell carriers. So if you have this ordinance and that wording is in your ordinance. then you're going to have multiple cell carriers coming in here and say, well, that tower over there won't hold our antennas. So then you're going to have another one and another one. You're going to have all these silly looking sticks up in the air. Well, years ago, I built the monopole tower that's by Red Door. It sits in the parking lot pretty much of the Red Door. That was one of my towers. And it's a monopole tower like what Verizon has proposed. But it does have the antenna arrays that stick off of the tower. You know, they're not twenty, thirty feet off the tower. They're right there next to the tower. And if you ask me, people these days have just grown accustomed to seeing cell towers that look like that. Another cell tower, a monopole that I built is behind Elm Springs City Hall. It's a monopole. It's a two hundred foot monopole. And it's definitely closer than two hundred foot to City Hall. Now, I know City Hall is not a residence, but you know. So I I just wanted you to know that if you have that wording in there, you're going to get a lot of applications and the town's going to look like a porcupine with these things sticking up in the air everywhere.
Where are you seeing that on page two?
Page two of this of the Harrington Miller's office. And he is, he is right.
Jason is correct that, you know, some of these ethical decisions might actually
Mr. Steel? Mr. Steel, this is Tim Burris.
Let's let Mr. Reichman finish what he was saying.
I'm I'm sorry, I was, some of these aesthetic decisions might have other cause, you know, perhaps some other negative effect effects to to consider such as the co-location. Co-location is a very important concept that you want to encourage a provider coming in to look at existing towers or sites such as Water Tower or 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 tall building or or something of that of that nature. So encouraging that co-location could be an important goal that we want to look at in this in this process and and it's better for the co-location is good for the tower owner, get some more income. But it's also a shorter process. It's administrative process where they you file an application. You don't have to get a CUP. You don't have to go through all of those longer processes.
Thank you.
And I know Art had a question and then it sounds like Tim had a question.
Go ahead. Art, you had a question?
In your professional opinion, this passed the planning commission one hundred percent. And if this city council would have voted this down, was this city going to get sued?
On the on the Verizon tower?
Yes.
Absolutely. That was going to go to expedite review and we didn't have any evidence in the no less substantial evidence in the record. And I said so as much at the time. Even stood up here saying, you know, now's the time if you want to put evidence in the record. It, you know, for a neighboring property owner or somebody who you know, did not support that decision, that that was the time to to do that was in that process. I've handled these cases on both sides. I represented cities who have been sued and for denial. I've also quite some time ago, represented a few tower owners on on siding decisions and in in court cases and it's the record is is it there's no, there's no witnesses showing up at at the federal court to give testimony. It's all what's in the record. And so if you have those concerns and they're valid concerns, but if you have those concerns in the in the record and they're deemed substantial, then the courts will uphold your your city's decision to deny. If you don't, you're going to lose and you know, the 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 tower's going in.
In other words, with the planning commission approved it, the city would have lost a lawsuit, correct?
Yeah, that's what I said. And that's what I stated at the time. Absolutely. And so, you know, I I I think that's part of the reason why I think it's good to come here and look at what our regulations actually are. And as you can see that they're currently a half page. And some of them are are kind of head scratchers that are in there like the galvanized color and and our natural wood grain color of a of a tower. And and so I think it's time to, I do think it's time to to look at those. And, you know, if we want to kind of be in a position to better address, you know, those issues, but also the safety ones and making sure that we're doing the 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 proper review and oversight of that, then we really need to be looking at strengthening our regulations.
Thank you. And Mr. Burris, I think you had a question as well.
I I did. I've I've got a question for Mr. Reichman and another for Mr. Steel. Mr. Reichman, so our current regulations, you helped out with those initially, is that correct?
No. I wrote the small wireless facility regulations in two thousand nineteen. But the current one were done and it looks like the last James, if you scroll down, does it say two thousand thirteen? Yeah, the last one, that was done back in two thousand thirteen.
All right. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for your work on this. And that leads me to my question for Mr. Steel. Thank you, Ms. Reichman. Mr. Steel, so what sort of, what sort of tower could be built that's a hundred and seventy feet tall? That would have more than two providers that it that it could support? Is that one of like, one of those that looks like an oil, Derek?
Well, the monopole tower that Verizon has proposed. I've built those many times that would hold at least five to six carriers. So it's just however it was engineered. You can engineer it to hold one carrier. Or you can engineer it to hold six or seven.
I see. I must have misunderstood you. I thought that you said that according to what Mr. Reichman had in his proposed regulations on page two, that we could only put two providers on on one of those towers?
Yes.
What 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 is it that would make our town look like a porcupine? That was good, a good visual. That was that was stuck in my brain.
Okay, the the proposed ordinance, as it states, as it is written here now, those monopoles, like I said, I used to call them flagpoles, that the way your ordinance is written, the antennas have to be mounted inside the monopole structure. You can't have antennas hanging on the outside of the tower. And back when everybody had four G in their phones and the towers had the four G antennas, you could normally only put two carriers on one of those flagpole towers. Well, now everybody's going to five G. The antennas are bigger and extremely heavier than what the four G antenna used to be. So I would say that those old flagpole towers, you could only get one carrier in there. So you would definitely have, Tony Town would be known as a porcupine city. I know that the city of Fayetteville, that this ordinance looks a little like the city of Fayetteville's tower ordinance and they like that pole with no antennas attached to it. And to me, every time they build one of those, I know that in the near future, there's going to be another one just right down the street. Where if they had built just a regular monopole like what's here at the Red Door. And, you know, that tower is designed for, I believe, four carriers. It has two on it now. I I no longer own the tower. I wish I did. It has two carriers on it. When I sold it, it had one. But y'all have any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steel.
You're welcome. Structurally, you're saying what we ought to do is or take out the the two and allow four or five or whatever. It it, there's not going to be any difference as as far as whether it'll structurally maintain or hold it, the capacity or whatever.
Well, that's correct. If if I was, you know, advised on how to write this ordinance, I would just say that the city would like to have monopole towers and leave off the part that says within internally antennas. Then you could, you know, a cell carrier could come in and build a tower just like what I built years ago at the Red Door. And there is, I believe, two towers in the city that would not you know, go along with this wording, but you know, those would be grandfathered in. And it's the three hundred foot self-supporting tower that's kind of down in a hole out kind of catty corner from Harmon. And then Jerry Clark's old five hundred foot guide tower that's out at the Christian TV station, I believe.
Mike Lewis's place.
Is that, yes, Mike Lewis has the self supporter on his property. Yeah. So.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Steel. Again, my goal on this was just to open the discussion. If anyone in council would like to push this forward to planning to let it be readdressed, to push it back to a Cal meeting to be addressed. I will look for any motions if anybody would like to to do this. I I did like the idea of pushing it back back to planning myself and let it be readdressed. But I will leave that to council's decision.
I think, Gene, that it makes sense that that we as a council discuss it a little further. Spend some time on it either in a at a special session or at the next Cal meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we discuss it further at the next Cal meeting.
First and second roll call.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber? Yes. Gene?
Epstein.
Penny?
Thank you, counsel. That will go to our COW for the next month. Next on our new business, item ten A, acknowledgement of the city of Tony Town Water and Sewer Audit. And this is Mayor Angie.
We just need the acknowledgement that the city water and sewer audit audit was received by the committee of the whole. And it will be also be on the city council agenda.
Acknowledged.
Thank you, mayor. Next discussion of an ordinance to amend chapter one ten, general licensing provisions in Tony Town Municipal Code, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Again, mayor.
Hey, this is an ordinance to amend the business license and the dis- and the cease and desist. So we do not currently have any way of penalizing businesses for not having renewing or renewing their business license. Currently today, we have thirty seven businesses that we know of operating in Tony Town without a valid license. On the cease and desist currently, we must the cease and desist must be issued by a majority vote from the city council. And it is my understanding that this was put in place before we had a police department. And we would like to get this updated. And I believe, Justin, Mr. Reichman, you have some further information on this?
Yes, exactly. I think I think you stated it well, mayor. In looking at a a recent issue where where we had a situation where somebody was operating a business without a business without being zoned, but also without a business license. Mayor and and Leslie and I got off the code and we're looking at what our options were. And they were really limited because they required us to get come to city council and get approval to send to send a cease and desist letter. And that's the way that they handled not only that situation where somebody was operating a business without having a business permit. But also the situation if you had to revoke or suspend a license, like if somebody was properly, if they were issued a business license, but they were doing some activity on their property that caused a nuisance. You know, take your pick repetitive noise violations, environmental issues, things of that nature. That was all kind of lumped in on the same process. And there were also some kind of rather burdensome parts of that process, like you had to notice the cease and desist by personal service, which in many cases might be like getting a process server to to do it. So we wanted to fix that up, but also address the due process concerns with somebody who is issued a permit and making sure that we have a good process for when somebody does have a business license permit and they get a notice of cease and desist. And they and they want to challenge that, that they have that ability to do so in a in a in a in a fair open, transparent forum. So a lot of the changes that are that are in here are those kind of separating those processes, making it so when there is a business that is not that is operating without a license, that city administration can 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 send a notice of cease and desist and start taking action on that, not have to wait three weeks for or or call a special city council meeting. The the other kind of big parts, you kind of see that on the on bottom of page one and going into page two. A lot of that has to do with the process of revocation or suspension that would be go to a due process hearing at administration. And then if, you know, somebody's agree from that, they can take that up to to city council, they would have the right to hear what the violations are. They could contest them. They could speak their piece in front of in front of the the council and then then have that process play out. The, let's see here, I want, there was another section that changed. There was also no fine for late business license. Or or for people who were who were who are not getting the business license. And it felt like there needed to be something to 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 encourage people to get those on time or within a reasonable period. All all the business license expire every year at the end of June. I think Leslie's been docking those since basically, you know, beginning of the beginning of the month or actually for the last month, right, mayor? It's been about the last last month. And I think it's gone from, you know, eighty to what it is now, thirty thirty seven. But you know that there needs to be some type of of penalty that's in there for, you know, for you know, folks who who are who are late in in getting their getting their license. So those were the changes. Are there any questions for me?
Justin, this is Tim Burris. So in one ten dot zero two, section C, part two, it reads, the mayor shall designate the appropriate city official or agent as the hearing officer to conduct the due process hearing. And this official or agent shall receive and hear evidence from the city employees or others, et cetera. What what precisely does that agent or official do? What what are they hearing? And should it be more precise? Say, chief of police? I I guess I just want to better understand that.
It can be. On, there was were some, I I I did a kind of review of various business license ordinances around the area. And there were some that would name a a particular official, like a chief of staff or a I guess you could do police chief or some other department head. You could you could choose it. I I did think about that. But, you know, you're your positions have kind of changed over over the years. Obviously, police chief will be around that that position, but there there's no, there's no problem with naming an individual official by job title there. I would just make sure that it's one that's going to be around and that you're not going to change. You know, the organizational chart and call it something different. Then we're having to figure that out at a later date.
Well, I I don't necessarily have any problem at all whether we name somebody or don't name somebody. I just wanted to ask if if it mattered and it was more precise. I think that's a a good answer. Thank you. And and that that person that is designated by the mayor, they they they're they're doing what? they, they, they're, they're doing what? They're, they're talking to the person who has received the letter, and they're saying, okay, so what happened here? And then they're making a determination on whether or not there's, there's, for lack of a better term, guilt there? Is that, is that right?
Yes. So they, they are, at the administration level, they are conducting a due process hearing with regard to the suspension or revocation of the business license or permit. And so the, you know, there's, there's a, a meeting that is noticed, a hearing date that's noticed, that's given to the license holder that says, you know, here, here's notice of a, here's a cease and desist, here's notice of a, of a hearing. These are what the issues are. You know, you're, 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 you're doing this activity on your, your business that you, you can't do. And that, that due process hearing is that opportunity for the applicant to come forward to the administration and say, no, that's not true. Here's my evidence. Look, here's my paperwork. I can, I can do this. And the hearing officer makes a determination at that time about whether, you know, the, the permit should be suspended or revoked. If it's suspended or revoked, then the applicant or the license holder can appeal that to city council, and city council makes final determination on that. So it's, it's a due process. Yes. It's, it's part of due process.
Right. That, that, that's, that's a good thing. And then that person that's named or designated, are they named or designated each time that something comes up so we can designate a different person each time? Or do we say like, hey, James, guess why? This is now what, what you're going to do as part of your, your role?
I think it could be, it could be handled by administration either way.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes. All right, sorry.
Well. My wife started out years ago operating a beauty shop in the house. Most of she did her sisters and her brother cut her hair, what that, but it wasn't say, you give me thirty dollars for this one and fifteen for this one. She took whatever they give her. Well, I don't know if Rhonda back there remembers, but anyhow, there was one person, he couldn't find nothing on me. So he went after my wife. And I don't think I have to mention anybody's names, but I won't do that. But the city council, I don't know if Henry would remember or not, but we ended up, because she didn't have a business license, and she wasn't making no fifty thousand a year, or five thousand a year is all she was making. But we ended up paying a three hundred dollar fine for not having a business license. We, I paid that. I paid the three hundred dollar fine, and we've had a business license ever since. But she doesn't do that, but just like I said the other day, she doesn't do that much hair anymore. She used to fix Larry's mom. She did older people. Duane Aitken's mom, she was like ninety-two and she just passed away. But I'm one of them that got this thing started. And maybe we should have had a business license years ago. I don't know that, but it was thought that she was buying and then selling the stuff in her beauty shop for making a profit. That's not so. But anyhow.
Yeah, you know, in talking with, I've, I've met several times with Leslie going through this, because she's the one who's deals, deals with the, the applications and kind of meeting people who come in, answering questions. And I think you're right, Art. I, I looked at that, and I think the current form of this regulation was, I might be wrong, but twelve, thirteen years ago was when it was.
It's been a long time.
When, when it was done. And I think it, it, it served a, a really good, good purpose. What happened was we had a problem with, with, with a particular business, and when we looked at what we could do to respond, our, our hands were, were kind of tied. So I think the, the, the feeling was we needed to make some, some changes to that to be able to address it. And it also, you know, there's been a lot of businesses come in since, you know, since that time, there's been, been quite a growth and probably served to, to, to take a look at that and see how the, the process was, you know, the process was going. So, I mean, the meat of the regulations are really the same. It's more the process of what you do when you have a problem. Fortunately, I don't think you've had very many. I, I don't know. Since, since I've been here, I, I don't know of any other time that we've had a cease and desist type situation or a situation that wouldn't resolve by the police chief or somebody else talking to the person and kind of working through it and bringing them into compliance. So sometimes you don't really kind of notice where, where the hidden problems are to you. You have to deal with a particular problem and then, you know, probably, you know, good practice to make changes at that, at that point in time. But that's what this is designed to do. It's just have addressed a few of those things that we came across recently.
Everything's not perfect.
No, no, it's not. It's not.
Well, and just, just a thought that I was having here is, at what point do you need this business license? Is it when you make your first dollar? Is it when you make five thousand dollars or more per year? Is it when you make a hundred, five hundred thousand per year? At what point are you required to have a business license? What if you're nonprofit? And you work out of your home? So just some thoughts that we might look at.
And, and, and take a look as you read through it, because there are some designations there for, for nonprofit, for there, obviously, business is defined and it's defined broadly. But there are situations where you have, and it's kind of getting to the zoning part, but there are certain occupations that are allowed to do at home, like in your residential zoned house, and they're, they're assessed, they're called accessory uses. And you can do those, and those are generally the one, the occupations that don't have a lot of impact. You don't have customers coming and going. You don't have employees on site. You don't have these type of things. But there are also occupations that a lot of people do at home that have zero impact. You would not be able to, to know that anybody was inside their house every day working because there's no outward activity that is, that is happening. So in, in your code, you have two different types of permits. You have a business license, and that's for anybody who's operating, whether it's, you know, a retail store or if they have a a business accessory use at their home. Or you have a, a home, a home residency, what's it called, a permit, or a home occupation permit. And that's if you are conducting business in your home, but you are not, you're not having customers, you're not having employees, you know, those, those type of things. So you guys actually have two different types of, 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 of permits there. And so you've had people, and we, we've already started kind of the new cycle. So you've had people apply for not only business license, but your home occupation permits. And if you want to change that, I would think that you probably would need to change that to time with the next cycle, because you already have taken in, you know, funds. And, and, or if you want to change the amount of money, and if you want to raise it, lower it, change it. I think all that would need to be timed with the next cycle because you've already have started a new one.
Any other questions?
I think, Gene, I think you bring up a really great point on, on how much money we're making. You know, every now and then you hear of, of some city or town somewhere where the lemonade stand is shut down and the little girl hauled off in handcuffs. We certainly don't want that to happen in Tonton. Do we need to do anything, Justin, Eichmann, Mr. Eichmann, to, to protect the lemonade stands in Tonton?
I think I actually specifically wrote in an exemption for lemonade stands. I'm looking for it. But that may be in another, another part we were looking at, but what was that?
And, and I, and I think, I mean, more importantly, like, you know, there could be a lemonade stand that's making millions of dollars a year, of course, right? So is there a, is there a financial umbrella?
There is. There's, there's a, and, and we talked about it because of the question of, of fruit and vegetable stands, like if you, and there's an exemption. It, it, it covers like a, you know, child's lemonade stand, but it also covers if you have your own garden and you grow your own vegetables and you put those out for, for sale at a, at a fruit and vegetable stand. That does not, this is all on the zoning side, Tim. So it doesn't offend residential zoning if you have a, if you have those, those, those type of things. So that's actually in your zoning code. That's what I'm thinking of. This has to do if you're operating a, a, a business, and that, that threshold is, can be a little bit of a gray one. But, you know, typically, I think we see people coming to us for a business permit after they go to DFA and get their EIN number and kind of get set up with the state for a collection of taxes. And, you know, that's kind of one typical threshold where we see most, most of our applicants come to us. Because the state says you need to get a business license from the city. But all, all those exemptions are actually in your zoning code. And that has to do with operation of those uses in residential areas.
Okay, thank you.
Whether you want to consider having some exemptions as well in, in the business license part is something we could, we could certainly talk about if you guys wanted to.
Well, it, it would probably be beneficial to see those lined up next to each other. But yes, thank, thank you for the, for the input there and the explanation.
So Justin, if, if somebody is knowingly operating without a license, sooner or later, they're going to have to, you said an EIN number or something? Is that what you just said? Could somebody knowingly operate in town and avoid it? The, the business license indefinitely if they so desired, or is there some point in time they're going to have to have one?
They, they can try, but they, they, there's, they have to pay taxes at some point, or somebody will catch up with them. To get registered to pay taxes with the state, you, you, you go through the process where you get your, your EIN number from the federal government, from the IRS, and then you get a, a state number as well. And it's always been my understanding that process, when you do that, you're instructed, you need to go, you know, you live in Tonton's, your business is in Tonton, you need to get a, a business license. Oftentimes, it's very outward because you can tell that somebody's operating a business because they have employees coming or, or they have merchandise or, or whatever. Other times, it's a lot harder. And I don't think that necessarily we, you know, police, you know, those ones that aren't causing any any effects on their neighbors or, you know, that, that don't have employees or any of those things, I don't think we're necessarily aggressively policing that. But in order to be in compliance, you know, they would need to get that home occupation permit or business license. But another ones that are obvious, and there's a complaint, and then, you know, it's a complaint-driven process where somebody says, you know, there's a business operating out here, and this is not zoned for that. Then, you know, we, we investigate, we get the facts, and then there's a, a process you need to go through. And ultimately, the end of that process, if, if you don't get compliance, and the person refuses to stop doing that, is issuing a ticket that goes through district court or, and then shutting off the water. And that's the ultimate, that's the ultimate penalty, that you shut off the, the services to the, whatever building or residence or whatever. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Eichmann? Look for a motion on this item. I'm, I make a motion before this on. Get, get to what we need to have corrected, corrected and get it. Get it where it's enforced by our. First, second, roll call, please.
So are you saying that we need to move it to the city council? Is that where you want it to go?
That's what we need to do, is it not?
Okay.
Oh, yes. My understanding is that does need to go on to council. So a motion to move this to council.
Okay, Amber?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Penny? Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Thank you. We are going to take a five-minute break. If you would, James, just set our timer to help us all be prompt to getting back and allow some of our council to take just a few moments, and we will return in just a few.
Okay. We will resume our meeting at this point. Thank you for allowing us a few moments to, uh, take care of business and, uh, stretch our legs. It, uh, gets to be a long night when you're up here this, for this many hours and, uh, this many items on the agenda. We've had a lot worse, but, um, again, thank you. Next, item D, discussion of an ordinance to amend chapter 111, sale of fireworks in order to include and define regulations for the use of fireworks.
Sorry, you skipped, you skipped the C.
Did I skip C? I'm sorry. Let me back up one step. My, my apologies. Discussion of the city of Tawny Town Police Department entering into a contract with First Capital Equipment Leasing Corporation for lease to own on six new Dodge Durango PPVs with law enforcement outfits and equipment. And this is listed for Chief Genison.
Um, first, Mr. Burris, I, I passed out an updated, uh, quote I received yesterday, um, just to update you on that, on the, on the four-year, uh, lease to own payment.
Awesome. Can you tell me what those are, Corey?
Yes, sir. On the four-year, the, the net amount, the finance is the same on the four-year lease to own payment. It went up to a hundred thousand, um, one twelve and forty-three cents. And the fixed interest went up to four point four.
Okay.
So the, my intent with, with bringing this forward, I, I, my goal was to bring it forward later this year, um, when we were closer to budgets. It's just to present another option for, uh, moving forward with vehicles. Our, our issue with, um, what we're starting to run into is, uh, over the past couple of years, we, we purchased some new to us police cars, um, Kansas, Kansas Highway Patrol is where we purchased a couple of those from. Um, basically they rotate out of their fleet at forty-nine thousand miles. Uh, rotate their cars out at forty-nine thousand miles and, and they'll sell them. Uh, we're able to purchase those anywhere from twenty to twenty-two thousand. Um, they come with some equipment. Um, so we're able to save some money on the front end. Um, I have reached out to them on, on the possibility of buying some of those and that waitlist is about a year out to get in line to get any of those cars from them. Um, but in doing that, that put a lot of our cars, um, six of them in line to the end of their lifespan is coming to, at the end, at the same time. Uh, we have six cars that mileage range from eighty-eight thousand up to a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and just getting to the end of their life suspension, um, so, uh, shocks and, and, uh, we've replaced two motors in two cars. Um, so getting to the point that those are gonna have to be looked at getting replaced. Um, this is a, a lease. Um, uh, this company is, has done business with the city of Heifel and city of Elkins, um, is where I, I've, uh, heard about them from. Uh, we aren't able to do leases or, or finance over five years. Um, I think Justin can touch on that if anyone has other, other questions on it, and it would require amendment seventy-eight. Um, but with the, the interest rate that had jumped from the previous quote that you had in the packet to, to what it is now, um, I wanted to throw it before you, uh, if it's something that's attractive to you to entertain, um, this is a little bit different than what you do with a, a personal lease. Um, this, this company does not hold the title, hold the registration or anything like that. Um, they do not restrict us on, on any of our out, outfitting. We can drill holes in the roof and mount our, our light bars and our antennas and things like that. Um, they also don't restrict us on, on where we purchase from. Uh, we can buy vehicles from one dealership and then have multiple different vendors and do different phases that they install. So, uh, it'd give us the ability to kind of shop around for the best price for our equipment and our needs there. So, um, if there's the other side of, of this, what attracted me to it more than anything was the ability to, um, try to get a, a fleet rotation started. Um, we're getting to the size with our fleet that buying two and three cars a year, um, won't maintain, um, a decent fleet. We're gonna get up into higher mile vehicles and, and start to have higher expenses and maintenance and repair on them. Um, the four-year payoff is, would be something that, um, and I believe that they can go down to a three-year payoff. Um, but it would keep it under warranty while the time we had it. Um, this company doesn't require any buyouts or payouts at the end. The only thing that they're gonna get out of it is essentially the interest. Um, uh, I can tell you, um, and I'm sure Mr. Burris can let me know what the interest would be on, on all of this. I'm not a, a math whiz, but, um, comparison to the Chargers that we had to replace motors in that blew up, um, was a little over twenty thousand. Um, about nine, ninety-eight hundred a car. So, um, that's just a little comparison on that. Um, the other thing that this would do is if, if you wanted to move forward with it, um, this money would come a lot sooner. Uh, we would be able to have the possibility at, towards the end of this year, if there's any other agencies that have had orders of police cars that cancel orders or, you know, the buying process fell through. If there are any left over at dealerships, we'd be able to purchase, um, out, out of the funds from this instead of waiting for the, uh, orders to come in. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
And my question is not necessarily on the pricing or whatever, but you, you have Durangos down here. Is it because that's because?
They, yeah, they, they asked for a vehicle. Durango is the last vehicle that we had purchased. Um, we've been happy with them. Um, um, I, we have been looking at, um, trying to split the fleet between SUVs and, and our cars. Um, the cars serve purpose for, for the highway. Um, but anytime that we're leaving the highway, hitting dirt roads or, or going through a field or somewhere, they are not the best. Um, so splitting the fleet between vehicles, also inclement weather, the flooding, things like that. Um, I know the Charger that I was driving, I could hardly drive through the parking lot with those pedals. So, um, just having a different variety of vehicles is, was our intent. That it does not have to be Durango as it can be, uh, any make or model. Um, out of the SUVs, the Durangos are, uh, on the lower end, um, on pricing. That is supposed to be released here in the next couple of weeks, I hope, for state bid pricing. Um, so I'll have a better idea of where those will fall, but it's open to, to any of them.
And so this rate is only good through July twenty-eighth. It's a, it's a locked fixed.
It is, and, and I, I visited with them, um, briefly about, you know, i- if moved forward from this, that it would go to, um, an August council meeting for, for a vote there. Um, and that is something that if, if voted to do, um, they would be able to extend this based off, um, they, they could work that out for us.
Yeah, chief.
Yes.
How about? Y'all had talked about getting a pickup. Have y'all got any trucks yet?
The only thing we've got this year is the two Durangos. The two trucks are still on order. Um, the last update I have, and they have not started production on those yet. Um, they were pushed, pushed back further. Um, I believe October is now when they're looking to start producing those. Um, Ford was hit pretty hard with the microchip shortage. Um, and they've started producing those in country now and feel that they can start to fill those orders later on. The other part of the explanation that I've been told is Ford changed a lot of their plants over to electric and hybrid vehicles, and these are neither. Um, so it's not a, as high on their list, um, to produce right now. But they do have plans to produce those and they, I'm told possibly November to December, we should expect delivery of, of the two pickups.
And with this price here, is that? They got everything on them or?
What I did is I, I priced at sixty thousand a vehicle to include the purchase of the vehicle and include the equipment that we would install in it.
Lights and everything.
Lights and everything. Um, you know, we, we could push that up to go for the bells and whistles and, and, you know, put everything in there that we could. Um, we don't really have anybody here. I'm sure the guys would love to have a little bit more equipment and, and shiny things in their cars, but what we have in them is, is the necessities that we need. Um, and that works just fine for us.
As you might imagine, I had to come in person to ask some.
I figured you would.
Uh, so you mentioned that your, your vehicles currently have between eighty-eight thousand and a hundred and thirty thousand miles per vehicle?
Yes.
Uh, about how old are those, those current vehicles?
They are two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen.
Okay. And, and do you have, I, I, I know this is a difficult thing to, to know, but do you know about how many miles we're putting on a car per year?
It's gonna vary from the officer. Um, I would say thirty to fifty would be a, I know that's a kind of a broad range, but, um, you, you know, I, I don't try to control the, the styles of policing that these guys have. If, if some have a knack to, you know, drive around and patrol one way versus somebody that would rather park and, and patrol a different way. Um, so we have some that'll be a little bit higher and some a little lower.
Sure. To- totally understand that. Um, and are, are there mileage restrictions in this lease? I know that.
There are not. Um, there are no buyouts, balloons or, or anything.
So it's different from a quote unquote residential or consumer lease in that regard as well?
Uh, we will also hold the title and registration, um, during, during the lease. Uh, it'll title and register to us.
Okay. So, um, i- i- if you said you just bought a Durango most recently.
Mm-hmm.
Was that a new Durango?
These were twenty-twenty-two's, um, built in twenty-twenty-one, just finished, I think in January. So they call them twenty-two's.
And these are twenty-three's?
These will be twenty-three's. Uh, Dodge confirmed that they are building Durangos and Chargers as well as their police version of the, the pickup, um, for twenty-twenty-three. They have opened ordering, um, for a short period. Um, this is earlier than they normally do. Um, and shorter than they normally do. Um, I reached out to, after I got an email, talks with Superior, uh, where we've purchased from before. Um, and they are able to, it, it's difficult to get police cars. Um, and what I've been told from dealerships is to get your orders in as soon as you can. Um, for example, the trucks that we have, we ordered in November, um, and we probably won't get them until November or December. Uh, and that's looking to be the same to follow suit with, with other brands. Um, but they are working with agencies a little bit more. So, um, I've expressed the intent for six Durangos or, you know, six, six vehicles to order from, um, a dealership. And that way they can get that order placed. That way we don't miss out on that. It, we are not locked into those vehicles or, or having to buy them if we choose to go different route.
So i- if I understand correctly, uh, it's, it's about sixty thousand dollars for us to buy a Durango and equip a Durango, right? For one of our guys.
Going off, uh, yes, going off, um, last year's pricing. Um, they didn't go through state bid. We had to do the amendment on that to go through with the purchase of these two last Durangos. They, I believe, going off memory, came out to be about thirty-eight thousand, um, per vehicle. The remainder of the funds is for the outfitting of the equipment, lights, um, siren consoles, cages, computers, camera system. Um, everything that's installed on and inside.
And it's gonna be about the same for a Charger?
Chargers typically run cheaper. Um, the last, the twenty-one Chargers that we purchased on state bid were twenty-six thousand. Um, and then equipment wise, we're still pretty close in the same, um, what it costs to outfit any of the cars. It's just the upfront cost of purchasing a car where it varies. Um, the pickups are a little bit more expensive. The Tahos are more expensive. Tahos and, and pickups run about the same. Uh, the Durango is the lower end of price on the SUVs. And then Chargers are the lowest, um, lowest cost. Um, so, you know, Chargers are something that we can look at. We have a lot of them. We've been happy with them. Um, my only intent with looking at other, um, vehicles was to split the fleet with whether it's bad weather or, or areas that we go to have an SUV to where we can get to those spots.
So I know you know this about me, but I'm gonna ask a question that lets the whole world know just how cheap I am. So I know you know this about me, but I'm gonna ask a question that lets the whole world know just how cheap I am. Is it at all possible to take some of the swag that we have on these cars, lights, bars, et cetera, and put them on a new? Charger, for instance, and save some of that money? I understand body styles change, et cetera, but is any of that swappable?
Correct, some of it is. You know, if we were to go with Chargers, a lot of it will be. I I don't know. Dodge is supposed to release the the specs of the vehicles in the coming weeks, so we'll know if there's any motor changes or the interior dimensions change any. If they are the same, then, you know, that's something that we can definitely look at to to be more cost-effective. It's, we can transfer a lot of our equipment over the consoles and the cages. Would be two things that would. The the interior design of the car, if it's changed a bunch. Sometimes those don't transfer. I know when I had a a Canine for the city. I had a seventeen year model Tahoe, and then when the new new bodies design came out. We we couldn't reuse the Canine kennel if we wanted to buy another Tahoe because they changed the interior dimensions and so you kind of lose on all of that. So, yes, we can look at that if if they are the same and go with, you know, a route with cheaper vehicles. Go with Chargers or or something else.
But all that aside. It it's about sixty thousand dollars, right, to buy a car. So you you said I I could probably tell you how much the in- the interest would be and. You can actually see it by by looking down here. So I did a little math. And if we did the four-year. Which is a hundred thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and forty-three cents a year at four point four percent interest. The cost per vehicle. Over the course of those four years would be sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. So that's your excess interest is roughly sixty-seven, forty-one, sixty-two, right? And then on the. The five-year, that number per vehicle is sixty-seven thousand, eight forty-four oh eight. And on the sixth year, the most expensive of the three, sixty-nine thousand, two twelve and ninety-three. So here's the, here's the downside to the leasing. You and I have talked a little bit about this before. I I I don't really know how I feel about leasing police vehicles. I I I have a stronger opinion in in the consumer world. But one of the concerns that that we have if we do this is that instead of paying sixty thousand dollars in that extra interest. And at the end, we keep the car. We, in the end, don't keep the car, right? Because it's a lease. So instead of paying sixty thousand dollars plus six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, ninety-two cents, and then keeping the vehicle. This suddenly looks like all of it is is interest or it's rent. On on a car that we don't get to sell, that we don't get to dispose of.
We do get to keep.
We do, okay. So tell me more about that stuff. And thank you.
Basically, what was explained to me from from this gentleman was that they they have a security interest on the loan amount to us. They title, register, everything comes to the city. We own the vehicles at the end of it. The the only profit to them is the interest on it. So that's, i- it's a little. Sorry.
It sounds unorthodox. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm not saying that there's something wrong.
It is.
I would think of as a lease.
You know, and and a lot of the ones that I've talked to before, when this is, you know, either I was approached or or I've heard about it and looked into it. We are restricted on what we can do with the vehicles. We can't mount anything on the exterior. We can't drill holes, anything like that. And they do retain the vehicle at the end of it. The city of Heifel recently did this, and City of Elkins did this on purchasing of police cars. Heifel is is where I got a lot of the info from, and. Their their dealings with it were pretty. Streamless, no real issues with it. But again, they, at the end of it, they keep it. The outfitting, the the vendor selection is on the city, so. There's no mileage restrictions or or any of that. It's puts the ball back in our court to decide with what we do with it.
And whether we own them or not at the end, our vehicles are not worth much once you put them like, our our Crown Vic is probably pretty much worth this, is it not?
Yeah, I think the last one we sold at auction was around, it was just a few hundred dollars. I don't think it broke that. The the two Crown Vics that we have, we, one of them, we kind of repurposed for. Kind of some of our EVOC driving and pit training, and that's our our goal is to use the the second car when. When we phase it out, is it still one of our spare units right now? You know, in doing this, that definitely the two cars that we spent the money on, the two motors in, I would keep as as spare units. And look to trade in or or, you know, whatever we need to do. I'm not sure. I think that would be just in question on. If we're able to trade in or if we have to. Put up a bid on to get rid of. And and that that is one of the ideas looking forward and into the the fleet rotation is if we're. If this is something that that works out good, that we want to try. You know, at the. The perfect example of this is at the end of the life of, you know, say, these six vehicles in four years. I can reach out to a dealership and let them know that I need six more vehicles and. Have those come in and get outfitted, and about the time that that process is done, it should be a turnkey to us. So we can take these vehicles, and as soon as we're done with them, we're trading them in and picking up brand new ones to drive away in.
Do our officers have a preference?
As far as.
Charger versus?
Depends on who you talk to. Some enjoy the Chargers, but anyone that has any size to them definitely enjoys an SUV.
Chief, I I didn't read the fine print until now, and I I can't read the fine, fine print because I didn't bring my glasses. But. One thing I do notice, in addition to everything that you said, I can I can confirm that we own it, et cetera. It says the only maintenance required is keeping the equipment in good condition and proper working order during the lease term. So every now and then we wreck a car in the line of duty. What happens in a case like that? Obviously, we have insurance, but what happens with the lease in a case like that?
Correct. Essentially, they would value the car at the time of that, and we would pay off the remainder for that specific vehicle. The remainders would stay in what we're we're paying on, and that amount would be basically deducted out of.
And presumably, insurance would would give us that cost.
Correct.
To to pay them off. Right. It it's it's different than anything I've seen before, but that doesn't mean that that it's not good. But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and what what do we do next?
I guess that's up to y'all. If if you want to push it forward. I don't believe, like I said, I I I will reach out to them and let them know, you know, again, if if it goes forward, that would be an August meeting. But the first annual payment wouldn't be until next year, so.
This is twenty-twenty-three budget stuff.
Correct, correct. And then I understand I'm I'm putting cart before the horse. But at least I have an amount to. I know what part of the budget will be so far.
Well, we've talked about it before, and I I'm for it. So if we need to make a motion to push this forward to the council meeting, then I'll be glad to do that.
I just can't have our gentleman afoot out there.
And I would second it.
Go ahead, first and second. And I'm gonna make a comment before we go further on this one. I'm I'm with Mr. Burris. Whenever I sell one of my trucks, first thing I do is pull the hitch off the back. Put it on my new truck. I'm gonna save a buck where I can. But in Northwest Arkansas, I've seen, let me rephrase that. I know of police vehicles where equipment wa- was installed by the city or to the department itself. And that entire vehicle went up in flames. So I am a big proponent. You you get what you pay for, and it's best to put. Things like that in by a professional that knows what they're doing, that's qualified, et cetera. I'm not one to have the plumber do the electrician's job and electrician do another job. So I I always prefer to have that stuff done on a vehicle. Before I purchase one, which is usually covered under the factory warranty, so. That's my opinions. Let's roll call at this point.
Penny?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes. Thank you, chief.
Back to item D. Discussion of an ordinance to amend chapter one eleven sale of fireworks in order. To include and define regulations for the use of fireworks in the Tonny Town Municipal Code. And Mayor again.
Okay, this is, this is to lay out a better timeframe for when citizens can sell and use fireworks. I had several citizens that called and asked for the time to be shortened. So we are proposing to move the ending time to July sixth instead of the tenth.
I like it. I I saw a lot of complaints on Facebook, too.
The the tenth does seem just a bit over celebratory to me.
A lot of citizens thought so as well because they're young children and dogs were not happy.
So it it would begin when?
It is actually on the. I'm sorry.
There it is.
June twentieth. And that is where the starting of the sale. So what what they, what it is, is they can start selling them, and they can use them. June twentieth until ten o'clock. And they can, they will go through the sixth instead of the tenth, but on the Fourth of July, it does go to midnight.
So. I- is the twentieth a bit early?
That's for the sale. They start selling them.
Right, but you said that they could use it as early as the twentieth?
They can, because the use and sell are together.
The use and sale are.
Are together, correct.
And the only thing about it. Years and years ago, I sold them, and you sell very, very few through the, let's say, the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth at all. So you're rarely gonna see many of them done. So that that's, I think, the twentieth doesn't really matter. I think it's the end date more so than the beginning.
What what do you think about the sixth?
That was my suggestion when we were discussing it. I said the sixth sounds like a good time to me. You know, what are the odds on it raining for a solid week through the Fourth of July, you know? I mean, you gotta put it off, but but what what's the odds on that? So I thought the sixth was great planning. I had a dog one time that that was terrified of it, and I know I understand people's concerns, so.
Question, Mr. Eichmann, is there state law on this that precedes this?
Yeah, the state law sets it at the twentieth to the tenth, but we can have a more restrictive. So you can you can narrow. You can't go beyond that.
What 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 do you see in other cities in this area?
I see everything, and I see some that are very, very restrictive and some that aren't, aren't, aren't at all. So I think it really is, comes from what's happening in the in the city. People firing them off at odd hours or or, you know. Well after Fourth of July, but I I must say, I I haven't seen one that goes beyond, that goes all the way to July tenth. All the ones that restrict, I mean, I think it usually ends at some sometime after Fourth of July.
Chief Jensen. Did we have any in the past few years complaints on these and roughly, roughly how many? If you can remember any of those.
I would have to get back to you on the exact number. I do know that we take. Quite a few complaints yearly around that time, as well as. New Year's and just some random other holidays. But I I can look and see when. Get you a number.
He brings up a good point. Are fireworks allowed on New Year's?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And wh- what are those? What what is the allowability there? Is it just on New Year's Eve? Is it? Does it extend past midnight?
I believe it goes to midnight on New Year's.
I would think that's when most people would start shooting them off.
We gotta make sure we add that.
So any other holiday is not covered under our ordinance, so they're not allowed or banned any.
I think currently we default to the state law, which is July twelfth to, uh, June twelfth to July tenth. I do not recall state law that. But with this, if you wanted to include New Year's Eve.
I think that would be prudent.
Yeah.
Have that in there.
So you 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 don't want everybody breaking the law on New Year's Eve?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Not not breaking two laws.
We'll we'll keep Cory's guys hopping.
He let it be said that Tony Town cares.
Tony Town does care. I've heard about that.
Yes, I think that'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Eichmann.
I do, I do have a couple of other questions. I guess one question, if you look at the general conditions on one eleven dot zero two. Section one, under parts A and H, it seems to me. There's sort of an odd dichotomy, but A states. Individual firework stands shall be placed approximately three hundred feet apart from other firework stands in all directions. That makes sense. You don't want them all blowing up at the same time. H, however, says all firework stands shall be no less than a hundred and fifty feet from any gasoline station. Any fuel vans, pumps, filling and fueling areas or fuel depots of any type, including but not limited to propane, butane, and LPG. So we can be closer to a flammable source than we can to other firework stands, and is that prudent? So that's a prudent distance in your professional opinion? Okay. It's gonna be fun.
Thankfully, we haven't had any firework stands at most of the gas stations.
That's good.
Maybe we should change that to three hundred feet as well.
Yeah, I I kind of like, I kind of like that idea. I mean, if if we're allowed.
I I think so. I'll, I've noted it, and it helps a little bit to one of us, but you all check that out, add that if I can.
This person on council would love for you to. Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Any other questions? We have a motion to move this with changes. I'll make a motion that we move this forward with changes noted.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next, item E, discussion of a resolution authorized the mayor to negotiate and enter into an agreement to see approximately. I think that should be so, approximately thirty-four hundred square feet of property owned by the city of Tonny Town. And this is for mayor.
I I had a citizen, Mrs. Foster, had her ser- her property surveyed, and she had a fence installed. She was later told that her fence was approximately thirty-four hundred square feet on the city lot, the city, a lot that the city owns. Mrs. Foster would like to purchase the land instead of moving her fence, and she has the documentation, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Foster.
You documents here, my name is, my name is Foster, two eighty-seven Arlington Way. And early last year. The city started the work on the creek. Mr. Gales, Carl Gales, came out and surveyed the the creek line and marked property lines, both mine as well as. The neighbors across the creek from me and then on the other side of Arlington. And so about that time, I got a puppy, and I just, I needed a fence. So obviously fences were pretty expensive with the cost of materials and labor last year. So I took the markings from Mr. Gales as well as probably what he used, which is. This view that shows differences, which is about twenty feet, twenty-five feet. this view that shows differences, which is about 20 feet, 25 feet from the perceived creek line. And so there are several iterations of the creek work that occurred. Garber came out because we had questions about the property lawn. I had already installed my fence and submitted my application for the fence to be approved, which was back in July of last year. So the markings were done spring, early summer. My fence started to install in August. Permit approved in July with scale, et cetera, submitted. And then when the next phase of the creek work started again, Garber came out to mark the pennings. And that's when I realized that the property that I thought I owned since 2014 and had been maintaining was not all mine. And so my fence was already installed and so I inquired about acquiring that property last year, last fall. And then with then Mayor Colvin and then in December again with him as the work was starting again. And so I've had several opportunities to inquire about purchasing the property. I was told at the time, don't worry about it, we're not gonna ask you to take your fence down. That's not good business practice and so I'd like to acquire that property. So the pictures that you have on this panel I'm gonna share, these are three views of near the property line, excuse me, near the creek. This one shows an orange dot here, this is here for scale, this is where Mr. Gales' business, engineering firm had marked the property line. So that's a closer, and you can see where my fence is. Here's one pinning and then there was a state here. The second photo is the state, which was knocked down with the construction and it was underneath this piece of the cliff. So three views, you can see that the, the creek bed is here. If you're familiar with the property, the edge of the creek as a street, this, the actual pole is there. So here's a tree on this end, that is what we're looking at, this is the original. So I had no reason to believe that that was not my property. So I was a little surprised when I spoke to Chris, the supervisor at Garber. So I just like to purchase that, it's roughly about 0.08 acres of property. Any questions for me?
I am so sorry, what a, what a nightmare, what a headache. I apologize that you've had to go through any of that.
We're here today, so this is progress, is that fair?
Yes, and they, and thank you for, for coming to share with us, I appreciate it. I have a cou, a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the survey was done by Gales Engineering, Carl Gales Engineering?
Garber did the survey.
Garber did the survey.
At the request of Tonny Town. What Gales, Mr. Gales' business came into play is when they started working on the creek the first time, because there were a few start and stops, for whatever reason. He came out and marked the property lines.
Okay.
And that was prior to me getting, picking up my dog and requesting the fence. And the fence took a few months because of supply chain. But it was marked and so we used those markings to plot out the fence. And obviously due to cost, I was not about to fence in my full yard, but I wanted to fence in enough, one, to be able to do some things in the backyard and to make sure that my dog had plenty of room to play.
I think that's.
So I was a little taken back when I realized that my fence was, one, sitting on city property.
Understood.
And then, two, that I certainly had less property than I, I thought I did.
Yeah, I, I totally understand that. So if, if I hire a surveyor, and I had to do that recently, if I hire a surveyor to come out and that surveyor messes up, I suspect most surveyors are licensed, bonded, and insured. And if they have an error, that they have to make that right. Does that sound right? I'm sort of asking everybody, including Ms. Foster, does that sound like a good business practice?
It is a good business practice, however, I didn't hire Mr. Gales. I did hire another surveyor for blood, which is a whole nother debacle if I'm, if I'm transparent about it. So, and it was about the same time that Garber was out and Mr. Gales' company was out. And he also, so the blood, blood survey company that I used also confirmed where the pins were, as did Garber, the only variance was Gales.
Okay, so, and, and that's what I was gonna ask was, do, do we know where that error occurred?
It was on the Gales side, if I understand the pennings, both my surveyor for blood purposes and Garber. And Chris, the supervisor from Garber, actually walked me through the pins. We took pictures together, he notated the difference and provided the difference in square footage.
Okay, so it's roughly 3,400 square feet. I, I, I think we, we've got the chief here, do we have to arrest her for being on our land for the last year? I'm teasing, I'm teasing. What are we using this land for? Well, that, that land that we own, that, that her dog runs on and probably does worse than just running on, but that's fine. I'm not blaming, I'm not, oh, thank you, I'm not blaming you for any of that. But what, what did we use that land for? What is that?
It, it, it's right away for the, the creek or the drainage way.
Okay, so we could have Ms. Foster move her fence line to get out of the right of way, potentially, right? And that cost, I would presume, would be covered by the, the company that made the error, right?
Yeah, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, when Mr. Gales went out, basically he took the, the final plat of that subdivision. He didn't actually do a survey. Is that, is that correct?
When you're getting into technical terms, but whatever he used, he mismarked the property line.
So was the?
Because those were property stakes that he was.
Were, was the property line, or were the property lines wrong on the original plat?
Do you know what a plat is, Ms. Foster?
Unfortunately, I do.
Okay.
Um, can't tell you, I can tell you that the, this looks really similar to the one that you received in email from Garber minus the number, right? Can I go back to the right of way? So when I was talking to then Mayor Colvin and Gales, we made sure that what I was asking for to acquire in property still provided the city a right of way, an easement around the outside of the fence. So I'm not asking for all of that space, even though I've maintained it since 2014. I'm not asking for all of that, I'm just asking for the space that my fence is sitting on. And that I continue, and I don't have a problem continuing, well, I don't have a problem continuing to mow and maintain the creek line. I mean, I pay somebody to mow it, but I want it to look good. But I am asking for the property that my fence sits on, which is, it actually cuts up through. If you look at the, do you have this?
Yeah, it's on the screen.
On our screen.
You can see where my fence literally cuts across.
And I believe Chris with Garber told me that the original survey or the original plat of the subdivision was incorrect. So when they did their survey, Garber did the survey, that's when they found the discrepancy. I believe when Mr. Gales went out to kind of lay out the, the creek work, he was going off the original survey.
That's interesting, because that's not what was told to me. It was told, it was told to me that it was accurate, so this is news to me that it was wrong.
Yeah. Well, I would need to verify that with him, it's been a while since.
Be that documentation as well.
Yeah.
Because that, he specifically said that it matched what was on file with, with the county. So I'd like to, to see the, the variance in the documentation.
I'd like to see that as well.
Yeah, I can get that.
Okay, so it's roughly 8% of an acre, right? 0.08 of an acre. What, what's an acre of land go for in, in your neighborhood? Any idea?
No, we're full.
Yeah.
I can tell you what I paid, but.
Well.
Almost 10 years ago.
We don't need to make that public, but I appreciate your willingness. Any idea what an acre of land is going for in that area, James?
I think we would just have to get an appraisal.
And the other thing, where it's at, I, I think she's maintaining for the city.
So we probably owe her some, some back work on that.
Exactly, yeah. She's maintained and mowed all our, our stuff as opposed to.
We want our subdivision to look good, I certainly don't want anything around my property, we have animals, so. It's, it's not a big deal to maintain, it costs money, but it's the right thing to do.
Mrs. Foster, are you also maintaining our property next door, the, the lot next door, the city lot? I know that your subdivision is, I didn't know if it was you in particular.
Uh, no.
No, okay.
That's Dan Barberd, if you're talking to one across the creek.
Yes.
No, but he knows that. We do water the trees, though. He takes care of, or Belmont, and I take care of the trees that were recently planted on Arlington.
I appreciate that.
You're, you're a good.
Our neighborhood.
Thank you, yes, thank you. Well, frankly, I think there's a couple of ways to look at it. But I think one of my concerns is that i, if we've hired somebody who has made a mistake, I think the mistake needs to be rectified and I think James can help us know where that mistake lies. And then whatever comes from that, comes from that. But this has been going on how long?
I bought the lot in 14.
And you put up the fence?
Last year, August of last year, August 1st is when they started, somewhere around the 8th, 9th they finished.
So for almost a year now, th, this has been up, and you found out there was a problem approximately when?
Hmm, last summer, late summer, early fall.
Right around that time, good.
Right around when Garber came out.
So do we need to table this then until we get a little bit more information?
Yeah, and I, and I, and I hate, I hate to push you off, especially considering it's in the center of your head. But, but yeah, I, I would love to make a motion to, to, to take it to the next cow meeting and, and gather some of that data and see what we need to do. Can we get an appraisal between now and then? Okay. Yeah, okay, then I, then I think we're armed with, with more, more information.
Well, I'll make a motion that we table this.
I'll, I'll second that.
Tim, just, you just made a motion to.
Also I did it, she seconded it and then I thirded it.
So what do you want to do?
Uh, yeah, what do you want to do? Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving it to the cow meeting? Okay.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question, what's the cow meeting?
Oh, sorry, it's what we're at, it's called the council of the whole. So when everybody, sorry, committee of the whole. So it's a, it's a committee, we have various committees that do various things, but in this committee, it's everybody from city council that comes together. So we don't vote here.
You're in it now.
You are in it now.
It'll be another month.
But we talk about stuff that we hope to do in the future. So a month from now, approximately, we'll bring this back and we'll talk about it with some more information.
So what happens after that, if I may ask, if, if you approve it, a month from now, what happens?
Well, well.
It'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda for next month.
Right.
And at that point, we'll approve the agenda, discuss it in the next meeting and encourage you to be here for it.
And then, and then i, if we pass it, we would pass it to the September meeting, which would be in early September, the first Tuesday in September, and then we would vote on approving it.
Whether it be, whether it be try to sell you property, give you the property, re, redo your fence, whatever the case may be, but there'll be some answer for you.
Thank you for coming, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Finally, item E.
We're gonna, we need to vote.
Excuse me, yes, roll call.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Item E, discussion of a resolution authorizing a mayor to negotiate and enter into an agreement to see approximately 3,400 square feet of property owned.
We did it.
Yes, sir.
Before I've gotten out of order tonight, I apologize. Comments from council, we'll start down here with Penny.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Thank you all for being here tonight, even though I wasn't. I'm thankful that you're here. You know, one of the things that, that we do as city council is, as, as you've noticed, any of you that, that come to these meetings, we're trying to make the city do whatever the city has to do. And a lot of that stuff, honestly, before I got here as a council member, I had no idea what a city did. And maybe you, you don't know much, but you know a lot more than I did before I moved here, that's for certain. And I suspect you know more than most people in Tonny Town. But I want to thank you for being here, because we're all trying to do something that's good for the city, but we're, we can't be everywhere. And you are the eyes and the ears of Tonny Town. So we need you to let us know what's up. I appreciate you, Mr. Steele, for bringing your expert opinion tonight. That's, I, I love that. We have several people that come over and over again and, and it's always good to see you. But I want to thank you for being a part of this, for being a part of democracy in action. With that said, we all on this panel are up for reelection in November. And although I think all of us like our seats, democracy is all about anybody that wants to be a part of this, being a part of this. So if you are interested in one of these positions, you've got your shot in November. And I don't know how much I'm allowed to say about that here, so I will cut it short at that point. But I want to encourage anybody who has any interest at all in getting more involved, please consider it. But thank you for being here. Mayor Russell, I am astounded every time I walk in the doors here. I came in yesterday and I am shocked at what I see here. I'm shocked at what you're doing in a very wonderful way. You're doing amazing things here and I'm thankful that you're here. I'm thankful for the hard work that you're putting in. It is a, a full-time job and it, it's wonderful to see that you're putting in full-time work. But everything from the signs that tell me who's in what office and the reorganization of offices and the repainting and it's, it's just fantastic and I want to thank you publicly for the work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Barris, Arthur.
Well, I know it cost us a lot of money, but it's a good thing we put that water line in. It's a good thing we got a water tower. We're gonna have to build another one. I was just told today, Centurion's got three of them. And you know, I remember what Rhonda said years ago, need rooftops. But it's getting to the point where these rooftops are causing us a lot of trouble. I know we, I know the good Lord, maybe he'll give us some rain here in a few days, because we sure need it. But, you know, just like there's three of them on here, or two of them, same thing I look at. But there's 139 lots, right here on Clint's Road, that's Henry Piazza's old, I mean, Henry Berio's old place. And then my neighbor down here, he's just got, what, 5.83 acres, down here was Bonoto, which is in a, some of it means in the flood plain, but I think this building's gonna have to slow down somewhat. We're getting too much. You know, if we had a multimillion dollar city that we could afford this drainage, it would be different, but we don't. I know she's been coming up here for a long time, I remember when, when Henry was here, she was complaining about the water. Water doesn't go through Seaman. I mean, it's, it don't take a a mathematician to figure that out. But you know, and I know your brother, he's building a lot of houses over on Clint's Road. But, boy, folks, it's gonna get to where one of these days we're gonna be in trouble, we already in trouble. Because the water is terrible, you can't, you can't do nothing with it. Water doesn't run uphill, it runs downhill. And just like that bridge below my house, down on Bonoto, I don't know if Joey remembers, but this has been quite a few years ago, just to fix the drainage on that was a quarter of a million dollars. And you could add another 150,000 to that now, that's just drainage. So like I said, it's a good thing we got Beaver Lake, because Northwest Arkansas wouldn't be nothing, I'm telling you. The way everybody uses water and you gotta have water, it's, it's a necessity of life. Everything's gotta have water. But I think we're gonna have to put up, put the brakes on it somewhere, because it's getting way too much. I'll shut up.
Thank you. Amber?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention something to Ms. Brown. So you mentioned being a squeaky wheel, but I do think that you're being heard. At the last planning board meeting, there was a development that came before them and they, um, they turned it down. And the main reason was because the landscape, they knew that it would cause a flooding issue. So I feel like they're paying careful attention, you know, to future projects. So I just wanted you to know, I didn't even know if you knew about that project or not, but they, they denied that approval of that development. So that's a step in the right direction. So anyway, I have no. Yeah. Yeah. That is all my comments.
Thank you, Amber. Larry? I don't believe I have anything. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Great festival. The great festival.
There you go.
Is.
I knew it was coming.
Yep. It's Tuesday, the second through the sixth. So our meeting will be Monday, the first, uh, that particular week. But you guys can come out and eat spaghetti Thursday, Friday or Saturday.
I knew you wanted to mention that. Every year. Um, few comments that I've got, uh, and this is some information that I want to get back to council. I do not have anything on it currently, but I want to get some of this information back to everybody. Uh, our FEMA flood damage, we had a lot of photos. We had a lot of, um, comments and calls from people during our flooding. And I don't know if you've got any of that to discuss, but that's something that we need to make sure we put in our open form. Uh, if we don't have it in this meeting, we need it in our next one. Uh, cause we did have people asking about the, uh, flood damage and any FEMA dollars that may be coming back to us. Uh, our information feeds to Washington County, Washington County feeds that in to FEMA and they determine if we had enough damage to uh, warrant anything coming back to us to help us with three repairs is my understanding. So getting some of that information. The Reed Valley Bridge, I know we discussed that with RDOT. I don't know if we've got information on that tonight, but that's another one that I've had citizens ask about, uh, finding information on that, the repair on steel. And of course our Barrington Heights that we've been discussing tonight. Um, and then our water sewer progress on our, on our, um, bonds. Um, I don't think we had any information on, on that tonight, but I'd like to see information on those items at our next meeting, just to kind of keep everybody up on the same page and let our citizens know where we're at. Um, that's all I've got tonight. I apologize. The meeting went on so long tonight. I'm gonna let our mayor speak here and, uh, again, I appreciate everyone hanging with us tonight. And I appreciate you being here very much. Mayor?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to welcome, um, Mark and Brad, where they're doing a phenomenal job, uh, our new planning people. And, um, I want to thank Ms. Nina Brown. You are awesome. We so much appreciate you. She brought in snacks for our city employees, a lot of snacks, not just a little bit. She brought a lot of snacks in for, um, the city employees that had to work over the Fourth of July weekend. And I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for doing that for the city. Um, also Ms. Graham, she brought a fifty-five pound watermelon up here and we got to cut it and eat it and it was delicious. It was fifty-five pounds. It completely filled her whole entire, um, tub that she had. It was unbelievable. Um, also a healthy harbor, they've been feeding us. They brought us some teas, so energy teas to keep us awake during the day. And, um, I just want to thank everybody for, for thinking about us and bringing, uh, brings treats and snacks and things like that. Um, on July twenty-sixth, we'll be interviewing for the fire chief position. Wanted to keep you updated on that. And thank you all for coming out and I appreciate you guys very much. Please continue to let me know what's going on. Let all of our council know what's going on because the things that we had tonight that was on our agenda came from citizens. And I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will look for a motion to adjourn. First, second, all in favor? Thank you, council.